I'd like to call the Water Works Board Meeting to Order for Wednesday, November 8th. Please stand for the pledge.
And two public statements, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Both on Mr. Troxel.
Yes, Mr. President. Councilman Rob Getzloff.
Present.
Councilwoman Robin Arvenitis.
Here.
Councilman Kevin Conley.
Present.
Councilman Caleb Johnson.
Present.
Councilman Thomas Schmidt.
Here.
Attorney David Austin.
Present.
Fire Chief Robert Patterson. Deputy Fire Chief David Meyer. Deputy Police Chief Steve McNamara. Park Superintendent John Novasich. IT Dan Jen. East Engineering Neil Simstad. Public Works Director Chad Nandorf.
Here.
Director of Operations Andy Hansen.
Here.
Town Manager Jim Gorman.
Here.
Recording Secretary Robin Teal. Clerk Treasurer Michael Troxel here.
Thank you, Mr. Troxel. The Water Board consists of three members, including myself, Councilwoman Robin Arvenitis, Councilman Kevin Conley. So at this time, we will remove Councilman Caleb Johnson and Councilman Tom Schmidt from the roll call. Minutes of the October 11th, 2023, public meeting.
Still moved?
Second.
We got a motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Any additional claims, Mr. Troxel?
Mr. President, there is one additional claim. This is item number N, and this is a pay request, number one, from Grimmer Construction, Inc. This is in reference to an Oakside Drive and Hickory Place water main replacement project. The total dollar amount for this first pay request is $209,693.70. And I refer to either Town Manager or Director of Operations if they want to make any more comments regarding this.
Any other comments, Jim?
No comments. Other than those two projects are still currently going on. This is just the first pay request.
Pleasure, the board. Move to approve claims.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries three zero. Reports from staff?
No reports.
Okay. Reports for council members?
No, sir.
None? Okay. There is no old business under new business. Consider acceptance of cell tower lease agreement for the 91st Avenue water tower between the town of Shererville and T-Mobile Central LLC, a Delaware limited liability company. Jim?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, this is a lease agreement that we have been working on for a few months now. The plans have been reviewed by our engineer and the agreement has been reviewed by our attorney. And we're just ready for you guys to sign off if you approve it tonight. This is for T-Mobile. The agreement pretty much mirrors the agreement that we have for the Anna Street Tower currently. And the monthly payments for that lease is $3,500 a month with 3% increases annually.
Excellent. Thank you. Pleasure, the board.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries three zero. There is no other new business, so we'll take any business from the floor regarding Water Works. Any business from the floor regarding Water Works? Any business from the floor regarding Water Works? Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned. We'll move now into redevelopment. Call to order the redevelopment commission meeting for Wednesday, November 8th, 2023. The time is 7:10 PM. For the roll call, we'll add council members Tom Schmidt and Caleb Johnson, and our advisor from the Lake Central School Board, Nicole Kelly, is here with us. Minutes of the October 11th, 2023, public meeting.
Still move?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
This is five zero. Claims, any additional claims?
No additional claims, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Troxel.
Motion to approve the claims.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
This is five zero. Any reports from staff? Mr. Hanson, how about a quick report on our downtown redevelopment?
Yeah, the RFPs for 22 West Joliet Street are out right now. We had two people pick them up currently, so we're hoping to get a few more people pick those up and get some more interest. So they're all due by November 30th.
It'll pick up the marketing a little bit.
Yep.
All right, thank you. Any other reports from staff?
No reports.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Andy, when's the deadline on that?
November 30th.
November 30th. Thanks.
We can extend if needed. All right, any other reports? Hearing none. Moving on, we don't have any old or new business. Any business from the floor regarding redevelopment? Any business from the floor? Any business from the floor? Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned.
I'd like to call to order the Utility Board meeting for Wednesday, November 8th, 2023, at 7:00 PM, 7:12 PM. The roll call remains the same as the previous meeting. First on the agenda, we have the minutes of the October 11th, 2023, public meeting.
Still move?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Carries five to zero. Next on the agenda, we have claims. Mr. Troxel, are there any additional claims?
No additional claims, Madam President.
Still move on claims?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Claims are approved, five to zero. Next on the agenda, we have reports. Are there any staff reports regarding the Utility Board?
No reports, Madam President.
Anything from the council members regarding the Utility Board?
Madam President?
Yes.
I have a question for, or probably Chad, or maybe Neil. Can you give us like an update of the utility work that's going on, like on Crestview, around Crestview and Meadow Lane in that area?
Yeah, Mr. Schmidt, that is the pay request you had during the Water Works Board meeting. That's the Oakside Water Main Replacement Project that they moved towards Hickory right now. And the project will be continuing to be completed yet this year.
And do they plan on paving before the year's out?
Yes. Yes, they do.
And then my second question, in Mr. Councilman Conley's area, what about the utility work that's going on there with Nippsco?
I would defer to Director of Public Works.
That's AT&amp;T, a boring project, providing fiber to the Plum Creek neighborhood. It's ongoing.
No, Chad, no, there's Nippsco's doing work on the power lines.
Are you talking about Main Street?
Along Main Street, yes.
Yeah, Main Street, they're doing the utility work in that section between Plum Creek Drive and Cypress right now. They're, they should be out of there in a couple days.
And what are they installing?
They're installing some kind of conductors on the lines.
Okay.
Not exactly sure what it is. They did notify us. We put the roadwork notice out, so motorists know that, you know, there's roadwork in the area and they don't, they can avoid it if they have to.
So, but regarding the fiber project, I did talk to our AT&amp;T contact. They're hoping to be done by the end of August. Now it's December, which is going to impact restoration, depending on the weather. So we're probably looking at spring at this point. But I don't have a definitive date when they're going to be done.
Right. Lot of that fiber went in the backyard, so that, that's not easy to work. And you're going in and out of people's fences and it's tough work. So that's, that's why it's taking a little longer, I would assume.
And so the above-ground green pads are being removed and they're putting in-ground boxes for the fiber connections.
Yep.
So they are starting to put those boxes in.
Good, good.
But there's a lot of restoration that's got to be done.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Nann.
You're welcome.
There is no old business, there is no new business. Do we have any business from the floor regarding the Utility Board? Any business from the floor? Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned.
Good evening. I'd like to call the Town Council meeting for Wednesday, November 8th, at approximately 7:15 PM. The first item is the roll call. The roll call stays the same as the Utility Board. The next item is the minutes of the October 11th, public meeting.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Next item is claims. Mr. Troxel, you've got quite a list of claims there. Is there any additional?
No, they all want to get paid, so there's no additional claims.
That's a good thing, right?
Motion to approve the claims?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second on claims. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Next item is reports. We'll start to my left there. Dan Jen from our IT, any report? Chief Patterson from the Fire Department. Deputy Chief Day Meyer. Deputy Chief Steve McAmire from the Police Department. Thank you. Deputy Chief Steve, can you give a quick update? You have your annual turkey raffle next week? That's Tuesday, the 14th.
The raffle tickets are how much, Steve?
And what, and what time does that start, Steve? 6 o'clock. Thank you. Park Superintendent John Novasich. Thank you. Our Town Engineer Neil Simstad. Any other report, Chad? Nandorf from Public Works. Andy Hansen, Town Manager.
No reports, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any reports from council members?
Mr. President, I'd like to say election yesterday went pretty nice and smoothly. I'd like to thank all the poll workers, the folks that were in charge of organizing everything and getting everything done. It was a very long day, but thankfully it went off without any hitch. I was reelected and I want to thank the voters for that. And that's all I have. Thanks.
And you took the words out of my mouth because I was going to wish Councilman Caleb Johnson and Councilwoman Robin Arvenitis, congratulations on their successful election yesterday.
Thank you.
Let's blow up.
Mr. Getzloff?
Oh, I'm sorry, and Mr., yes, and our senior councilman, Mr. Getzloff.
Just like an old piece of furniture.
And, and our Clerk Treasurer Mike Troxel, and our Town Judge Randy Wiley. So I was, I hadn't turned to look at you yet, Rob. I was, I would have got it. Congratulations to all of you. Item on the agenda is a presentation from Georgiana Galavas. I hope I pronounced that right. From Logan's Love. If you want to step up to the podium.
Hello, everybody. My name's Elaine Reyna, and I'm going to be speaking on behalf of Logan's Love. So with me here, I have the Logan's Love Committee and Nicole, who is Logan's mom. And we are-
Miss, can you get a little closer to the mic?
I sure can. Sorry about that.
Thank you.
And we are here today to thank everybody in the town of Shererville, the council, the staff, first responders, and community members, because we have had such great fundraising for our Logan's Love events. And we are here tonight, not only to thank you all, but to present one of the 53 Ben's Blue Bags that we are going to be providing to the Shererville first responders. We have Matt Kotasek here, who is the founder of Ben's Blue Bags. He has a son on the autism spectrum as well. Do you want to talk a little bit about what's in the bags, what they're for?
Good evening. So my name is Matt Kotasek. I'm a lieutenant with Crown Point Fire Rescue and creator of Ben's Blue Bags. The program, we started a little bit over four years ago now. Shererville Fire Department, Chief Patterson, Chief Meyer, one of early fire departments to do the program with all the first responders on the fire and EMS side. But the Police Department now is asked to get involved with it. We've had really great success here in the town of Shererville. It actually took one of the Shererville paramedics using it on a call where they came in when PD showed up and was having a hard time de-escalating a situation. And they're like, what's up with these firefighters showing up with this bag? Why don't we have it? And that's, and what happened with Logan, it kind of inspired them to put 53 bags on all the Shererville police cars. So that's something moving forward. And I'll be coming back next year to help provide training for all police officers, along with retraining all the fire department staff. So there's various sensory stimulation items to help you de-escalate autistically, even a special needs patient during an overstimulation or an emergency event. But also, it's a hour and a half program that I go over autism awareness for all first responders, all levels of first responders, just make them better at handling somebody that could be on autism spectrum, but also special needs. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to mention that, you know, Matt developed these bags in the training to help our friends in the community on the autism spectrum. But like he said, you can generalize this equipment to almost anybody that's in a traumatic situation. So there are communication boards, there are a couple different types of communication options in there. There are noise-canceling headphones if there's a lot of commotion going on. And so if you think about even maybe somebody who just survived a stroke, might not be able to communicate the same way, now you have another tool in your tool bag. So I just wanted, we all wanted to thank everybody for your support. We are still accepting donations because our goal is to now equip all of Lake County police cruisers with the Ben's Blue Bags, and we're well on our way. We're very excited. We wanted to thank the first responders of Shererville as well, just for being willing to learn and incorporate some new tools to help serve the community. That's what it's all about. So, thank you, everybody. Yes, and we would like to present this bag and possibly have a photo taken.
Chiefs?
Chief McAmire?
We'll get out of the bag.
We're going to be the backdrop.
Duck, Tom, duck.
He picked the wrong guy. He doesn't even own a cellphone.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Leave this with you guys, too, because we're doing a sensory Santa. And if you guys could promote us as well for special needs children, that we're going to host December 16th. And if any council person here wants to be a Santa Claus, we will love that.
Pull that down if you want.
I was offering one of you guys to be a Santa Claus. I think that would be awesome.
It's perfect.
I got the white hair for it.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much, everyone. That is a great program and we appreciate the involvement. Next item on the agenda is public comments regarding agenda items only. Is there any public comments regarding agenda items only? Yes, sir. Step up to the mic, please, and state your name and address. You can lift the mic up if you need it.
I think I'm good, actually.
Okay.
My name is Adrian Shabat, 413 East Joliet Street, Shererville. Go ahead. Yeah, go ahead. I am here to share my support in item C under new business regarding the variance for the chickens, and also to share my support in adjusting the town's ordinances regarding chicken keeping here in Shererville. As I've watched this unravel over the last couple of years, what I feel is it's really a topic that's not important to most people in power here. Just like I don't care about NASCAR, I don't care about my son's Minecraft, I don't spend a lot of time researching it, learning about it. I just don't care. And it's discouraging to see that because for a small percentage of people in town, it is important to them. You've heard the presentations on the benefits of it. I was at the BZA meeting a couple of weeks ago. Very, very discouraging to see some of the ignorance from the people making decisions about it. And I'm not saying ignorance in a negative way. Again, if you don't care about something, you're not going to take the time to understand it and educate yourself on it. For example, one of the main folks who was vocal about his opposition asked how hens lay eggs if there are no roosters around. I mean, that's fairly basic science there. I mean, there are 30 million eggs laid in the United States a day, and thankfully we don't have 30 million crazy roosters impregnating 30 million hens a day. That'd be insane. Another individual cited his concerns that chickens are unhealthy, yet never was able to verbalize what his concerns were regarding health. I guess, are we worried about a giant salmonella outbreak in Shererville if we have a couple of families with chickens? I know some folks have voiced their concern about the fecal matter. Fecal matter from chickens is one of the best fertilizers for lawns and gardens that's out there. We have dogs. Dogs are putting about 30 million pounds of waste into landfills every single day. We don't have to worry about that with chickens. I'm down the road, I have 350 feet of frontage on Joliet. Every three days that I had to mow this summer, I had to go clean out gigantic dog bombs that people left on my parkway. Not something that we have to worry about with chickens. Noise was a concern. You know, I have neighbors that leave their dogs out 24/7. I hear yap, 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 yap. I have, and I joked about this on the Facebook page this week, I have eight to 10 turkeys on my property that seem to show up right after they were relocated from the school. I never hear them. I have deer on my property, I never hear them. A family having six, eight, 10 chickens, neighbors aren't going to hear those. The same individual stated that we're not a rural town, so why should we have chickens? Yet other towns that are more dense than us, like Hammond, have figured out a way to do it. So all I'm asking is that we put our personal opinions aside. There's plenty of things that you guys do for a town that may not interest you, and that's okay. But let's come up with a way where we can allow it, yet regulate it at the same times, checks and balances, so it's a win-win for both the town and the handful of people that are interested in doing it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So, yeah, everything he just said, basically. But my name's David Parks. I live at 7529 West 77th Avenue, Crown Point, Indiana. I have two acres. I'm going through a variance process right now. I have six hens on the property. I'm trying to get a variance on just a 20 by 20 foot area of the property. It butts up against about 10 acres of land to my east where no one lives. I've had these chickens for seven years. Again, they're all hens. I've had no issues. I've got two adjacent neighbors. They're very aware of the chickens and they support it. And we've had no problems since I've had these chickens. I went up in front of the BZA a couple of weeks back, and just a couple of things I wanted to address that they came up with. One of the first things they said, they didn't want to set a precedence for other people to go through this variance process because they think, you know, other people are going to think they can go through this process and get chickens or whatever. But, and that's, everyone has that right to go through the variance process, but obviously it should be a case-by-case thing. You know, I'm in a unique situation where I have the land and the property. I've, again, over two acres and plenty of property to the east where there's nothing. And that's where the coop is situated, on the east side of a barn that was already there on the property. So, you know, I just didn't feel like that was a fair concern. The next thing they said was health concerns. He had no specifics. He didn't really know what the health concerns were at all. Again, my fiancee, she's a nurse practitioner. We have a daughter. She would never allow us to be in any kind of harms way with health. We've eaten thousands of eggs. We're in the coop every day, cleaning it daily. It's maintained. There's gates, locks. There's never been any, any health concerns whatsoever. And like the gentleman said, we use all the waste for compost to grow our vegetables in the garden, so everything kind of works together. Also, they said devaluing of property. Again, I don't, I don't know how it devalues the property. We don't, we have six hens. It's, I've had an appraisal- I've had an appraisal since I've had the property, it's gone up substantially since I've owned it, the small coop on the two acres wasn't even mentioned. Again, the coop's hidden, it's out of sight, I built the coop myself, it's not something that, you know, I got from tractor supply, or it's not, you know, it's nice, it's maintained. And so I just want to address those issues that they, that they had, and let you guys, you know, know that I want to express this is a need for our family. It's not just a hobby for us, it's become a way of life for our health, for other people within my family who have health issues. I have an uncle who's 75, he's a veteran, we give him eggs every week. And, you know, he's gotta be on a special diet, and it's, it, it, you know, the eggs and the food he has to eat has to be like anti-inflammatory properties and, and, you know, my fiancee, who, her sister was diagnosed with breast cancer back in 2015, and she also, then we found out she had the BRCA1 gene mutation, so we started to, that's when we got into the not eating as much processed foods and trying to grow our own vegetables. And that was kind of what, when we initially got the chickens. And anyway, I just want to say, we'd like to continue what we've been doing for the past seven years.
Any other public comments from the floor on agenda items? Any other public comments? We'll move right into old business, then. The first item on the old business is Item A, is to consider a variance of use to allow a home business to consist of police, security, canine training. This was deferred from October 11th, 2023 meeting, is a boarding, border zoning case 23-8-11. The location is 510 77th Avenue. The petitioner is Alad Bakar and Julianne Bakar. Is that pronounced right?
Bakar.
Bakar, yes, thank you. The BZA favorable recommendation with conditions, that there, number one, there will be no outdoor kennels and no overnight boarding of canines. Two, petitioners will provide proof of liability insurance. Three, the petitioners will have planted 30 additional trees on the east side of their property per the proposal provided by Victory Gardens and submitted as evidence during the hearing. Four, the petitioner will comply with all applicable local, state, and federal regulations. And five, the petitioners will not train nor have on the premises more than four non-police canines per day. Mr. Gorman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, this was deferred from our last month as the town council needed more information on how to secure the area so that there was safety in mind, and the petitioner was gonna look into fencing, pricing, et cetera, so I'm sure that's what Mr. Weiser just handed out here.
Welcome, welcome, Mr. Weiser.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jim correctly stated what, what we believe we're here for. We already had unanimous approval of the BZA with the conditions, several of which went specifically to the issue of securing of the property and protection of the neighborhood and adjoining property owners. We were asked to think about or consider and or look into a possibility of further additional manner and methods of security, particularly a fence that would be located right at, by the pole barn, by where the dogs will be trained, and a way to maybe make the transfer of the dogs more, more safe. Before I get into that, real quickly, I just did want to let you know that the, the additional trees have been planted on the, would that be the east side? I don't know. On the east side, those have been planted. There's, after planting them, it was discovered there's gonna be room for some, several more, and those are gonna be ordered, they probably won't go until the spring, but that will complete an entire screening of the property to the east, all the way back to our client's north property line. As far as the fencing goes, you, I laid that out there for you to take a look at. My client obtained this from Reeves Fencing, and you can see the nature of the fencing, the schematic, which we thought addressed the concern and what the cost is. Our position is that we don't, we don't contest or dispute the right of the council to ask for this additional screening, but quite frankly, the purpose for which our client is doing this, and the cost, and the ability to recover that cost over any reasonable period of time is just simply beyond their capability and capacity to handle. And so we're here tonight asking that you approve the, the plan, or approve the project or the plan or the variance, the use variance as it was approved by the BZA with the conditions that the BZA attached.
Thank you, Mr. Weiser. Any comments from the council?
Everybody looks at me, I guess I'll start. Mr. Weiser, thank you for your presentation, thank you for the estimate at my request. You did go out and your client did go out and get that, and I appreciate that. I don't think it's unreasonable to ask for the area to be fenced in as an additional condition. I realize that that's a lot of money, and I know that that's a hard thing to ask of a new business like this. But it is also a cost savings to your client to have a business in his home as opposed to going out and renting a facility that is set up in a, in an area that allows dog training. So, I mean, when you weigh the, the cost benefit of having this in his own barn, at his own house, in a residential area, versus renting something in a commercial unit on Kennedy, for instance, where you have a, no variance needed, then you're gonna be saving money in the long run. So $15,000 is a lot, and I get that, but in the end, now the neighbors are safe, now we know we are allowing a business to operate in a residential area with, with us as a council doing all we can do to make it, make it safe. That's my position.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. I guess my comment on that would be, and I believe you have large dogs also, that would be no different than anyone pulling up to their driveway with their dog in their truck, and the issue about, is my dog gonna get loose and run over to the neighbor's house where the kids are playing in the yard?
That's absolutely untrue, because my house, I have to have my dog secured by ordinance on a leash or in a fence, and that's what these folks should have, but he's dealing with problem dogs who need training.
But they're gonna be on a leash also, so...
How do we know that?
Well...
They're in a car when they arrive. Most folks probably don't have their dogs on a leash. I'm just saying that it is different in the sense that he's dealing with dogs that are untrained, you don't know my dogs. My dogs might be very well-trained and might not run out of the yard and bite anybody.
But he's not gonna let a dog out of the, out of the vehicle without, on a leash either, he's not just gonna let the dog run out.
The one controlling the dogs, the owner who can't control the dog is showing up for training and may or may not do what they're supposed to do. That's what I want to prevent.
I drove by, I drove down there and saw the location of the, it's, it's pretty secure already, and with the, with the work that they're doing already, I think it's gonna be, work fine and be secured.
Is there any fencing at all?
On the east side?
Just one side?
Just on one side, there's, there's, are those Arbivides? Yeah, are those Arbivides that are on the... Right, but I want to ask, are there Arbivides on that left? Is that on the east side of the Arbivides? Is that, okay. The, the actual fencing is on three-fourths of the property. Well, it runs on the north side and it comes down onto the west side, and then the...
That's on a neighboring property, that's not on his property.
No, part of it's on his property, part of it's on the neighboring property.
I'll just say it, I support Councilman Johnson's concern, and primarily for me because of the location right in the middle of a residential neighborhood. That's my concern. If we add this last step to secure the pet, you know, I don't think it's too much to ask either. So I agree with Caleb and his concern.
I wouldn't say his pole barn where the vehicles are gonna pull up to, I wouldn't say that's in a residential area. That's on the back, that's on the back part of his lot, you have to go down the whole driveway to get to it.
Well, if I might, see, this is the, this is the challenge that we have under Indiana law, where one of your bodies holds a public hearing, makes a decision after they've heard all of the issues. Two neighbors expressed concern. One neighbor's concern was solely and exclusively that he was sick and tired of a business being there, because there'd have been a business in that pole barn before. He wasn't objecting to the safety or the concern. He was concerned because, you know, jeez, I didn't like that business in there, which was kind of a manufacturing type or process. And the other one did express a concern about safety. So when we conduct those public hearings, it's the opportunity for the residents to come in, especially those that are adjoining or nearby, and say, hey, this is what I've got a problem with. Now, there's, there's a number of homes down there, there's a number of people that got notified because the condos are there. So it wasn't like three people got notified, 68 residents got notified. Two showed up, and one said, I just don't like another business there. But we sit here saying, in spite of that, in spite of what was, what took place at the public hearing, which by the way resulted in the conditions you saw, which are reasonable, now the council and the councilman, I'm not, I'm not saying anything derogatory, it's, you can, you can bring it up, you can raise the issue, says, well, on top of all that, I feel that you ought to spend over $15,000 more, because it bothers me. Didn't bother anybody else's public hearing, and that's who it was for. It was for the residents, it was for your constituents. And it's just asking someone, highly unusual, to ask someone petitioning for a use variance where others have occurred similar in nature, well, in your case, we want you to spend $15,000 more because we think it'll make it safer. I think that's an arbitrary decision, I don't think it's, I don't think it's consistent with the, with the public hearing that took place at the BZA, it's not consistent with the BZA's determination, and they, and they imposed a number of conditions, all of which we agreed to comply with and have to some extent complied with. So on that basis, we feel it's appropriate, we're not gonna change our minds, you can make the decision the way you want to make the decision, we respect that, but we're not changing our minds.
Thank you, Mr. Weiser. Any other comments?
No.
Excuse me, Mr. Johnson?
I said, motion to deny variants?
We have a motion to deny? I'll second.
Mr. President, Caleb, could you add some basis for that if you have such?
Sure. Motion to deny the variants, considering that the petitioner is unwilling to comply with my concerns to make the drop-off and pickup facility safe, and based upon my concern that this variance would be unhealthy and unsafe for the area as currently proposed, I would make a motion to deny that variance.
Thank you.
I'll second.
We have a second, a motion and a second roll call, Mr. Troxell?
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Conley?
Yes.
Mrs. Arvinitis?
Not supporting the motion to deny, no. So I want to approve, so I do not, no. Hold on.
That'd be a no.
Yes, no to the deny, yes.
Mr. Getzloff?
No to deny.
Mr. Schmidt?
No.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Probably need another motion.
That's what I was just gonna say, we'll entertain another motion? A motion to approve as stated.
Second.
Mr. President?
Roll call.
Rob, could you consider adding some basis for that motion?
Okay, so, which one, where are we at here? First one, right?
Yep.
Okay. I moved my, well, motion to approve what was stated as far as, I already moved my paper, so...
On the basis of the BZA findings?
On the basis of the BZA findings, yes.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Mr. Troxell, roll call on that motion, please.
Mr. Johnson?
No.
Mr. Conley?
No.
Mrs. Arvinitis?
Yes.
Mr. Getzloff?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes, motion carries 3-2.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Weiser. Next item is on our new business, is ordinance 1998, and ordinance establishing compensation, salaries, and wages for officials and employees of the town of Sherrville, Lake County, Indiana, classifying certain positions of employment, together with rates of pay, repealing and amending prior ordinance in conflict herewith, and declaring that emergency exists. Mr. Gorman?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, this is the proposed 2024 salary ordinance we do every year. This does include a 3% increase.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
But, Mr. Trox, or, I'm sorry, Mr. Austin, to approve it and to adopt it, it'd have to be unanimous?
Yes.
Motion to approve ordinance 1998?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Mr. Troxell, roll call.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Conley?
Yes.
Mrs. Arvinitis?
Yes.
Mr. Getzloff?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
No, only because I, there's several things I haven't had a chance, I'm, and I'm sorry, due to the election and stuff, I haven't had a chance to go through the whole ordinance, and therefore I'd like to adopt it next month. So therefore, on this one...
Not on adoption, Tom, we're only on the motion to approve.
Yeah, that's...
No, I have to, I have to say no on the approval to, to, that way it will get adopted the next month.
It doesn't get second reading tonight.
It doesn't get second reading tonight, so my vote tonight would be no. So it'd be, it carries 4-1, and then we will, we will adopt that at our next public meeting. Thank you. Next item is Item B, is, I'm sorry, Mrs. Teal, that would be approved 4-1. Thank you. Resolution 2023-14 is a resolution of the town of Sherrville, Lake County, Indiana, approving the town joint inter-local corporate cooperation agreement with the town of Dyer, Lake County, Indiana, and the town of Munster, Lake County, Indiana, for the asphalt patching of Main Street and all matters related thereto. Mr. Hanson?
Yes, Dyer, Munster, and Sherrville have been working together to get an area from roughly Dyer Ditch to Cypress Drive patched in. Munster is working on a project to do some widening in the future, so the road's in pretty bad condition, so this is a temporary fix to get us by until that big project comes through.
So, Mr. Hanson, I think the original plan Munster had was a complete rebuild of Main Street, curbs, sidewalks, new drainage, and I believe that's been delayed a few years, correct?
Correct.
All right, so this is a much-needed, we'll call it deep patchwork, that should last at least a few years.
Yes, and this work is supposed to occur next week. Dyer already signed the interlocal, and Munster has it on their agenda for tomorrow night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
No, motion to approve, resolution 2023... No. Motion to approve resolution 2023-14.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? No further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five-zero. Thank you. Item C is consider variance of use to allow six to 10 hen chickens to be raised and kept on site on a two-acre residential zone one property. This was also a zoning appeals case 23-10-20. The petitioner is David Parks. Their location is 7529 West 77th Avenue, Lincoln Parkway Acres, Lot 29. This came to us with an unfavorable recommendation to the town council of a three-to-one vote. Mr. Park, how are you?
Good. How are you? Yeah, I addressed the issues. I guess it came up a bit early. Sorry about that. But yeah, the issues with the BZA was, again, the health concerns that they said they had, which, like I said, my fiance is a nurse practitioner, and we have no, we've had them for seven years. We've had these chickens for seven years. There's, there's been no health concern. They also said they didn't want to set a precedent, you know, to have other people think that they could go through this variance process and think that they could just get chickens by going through the variance process, which I don't think you're going to get many people that want to go through this, this process. And I have a unique situation where I have the room and the property and the acreage. And the last one was the devaluation of a property, which, again, the coop is well-maintained. It's hidden. My property butts up against another property that's 10 acres, and it is, there's nobody that lives on that, that property. So over seven years, I've never had any issues with, with anything as far as, like I said, I've had it appraised, and the amount is well above where I bought the property. You know, if I had to take the coop down because of, for some reason, someone bought it and didn't want it, it could be taken apart in a matter of hours, you know? So as far as all that stuff and the health concern, they had no specifics is what they meant. But like I have a daughter, we're in the coop every day. We have never had any issues with, with health. We eat the eggs. We clean the coop, like I said, daily. There's no issues with anyone, you know, ever going through my yard or knowing that it's there. It's, they're contained. They don't get out. They don't make noise. It's just hens. There's no roosters. The variance is for six to 10 chickens. I've only ever had six. I mean, I'd be willing to go to four to six chickens if I had to. But like I said, we've been doing this for seven years and had no issues.
I do agree that we're not looking at a precedence here because the variance process is there for a reason, to study things on a case-by-case business. And we've got a pretty specific process where we give your neighbors a chance to weigh in. In your case, you know, they've been around you for the six years or maybe less, depending how long they were living there. You know, that's important. And I also look at the location.
Right.
Getting back to case-by-case, okay? Maybe in a densely populated subdivision, it might not be a good idea.
Right.
Maybe perhaps people would remonstrate. Maybe they wouldn't.
Right.
But we're examining this as a single case. Is the way I look at it.
Yes.
You know, so I think what you presented is very good, you know, very thorough. I do plan on supporting this, but I don't think we're setting a precedent each time we approve a variance or we don't approve a variance. It's not about precedent. It's about what we're doing in that case.
Right.
Yeah, we do have to think, you know, what are the repercussions to this? But this is simple to me, is the way I'm looking at it. So thank you for your thoroughness.
Thanks.
My question, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, ma'am.
My question is, if you've had them for many years, how did you end up asking for a variance now? Did someone complain about your chickens?
Well, when we first moved in, my address is Crown Point. So the regulations I went by was Crown Point. I mean, I asked the gentleman that gave me the citation, how, how they found out I had chickens or whatever. And he said, nobody that lives around me turned me in. So I don't 100% know how. The only thing I know, and this is just speculation, the town was doing work at the end of the road during the summer, and I had the chickens kind of roaming around. They may have seen them. That's just speculation. I don't know. But he said to me that nobody lives around me or anyone that is in my neighborhood complained about it. So that's all I know.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Getzlaff? Or my comment, my comment would be, I would have to disagree with Councilman Conley on it about setting a precedence because, because our zoning ordinance states that chickens are not allowed in the town limits. And of course, your property is in the town limits. I listened to, I've talked to thousands of residents in town, and the residents in town said that you should stick to your zoning ordinance and.
But we should have just denied that business then.
Yeah, they should have allowed me to do the variance if it wasn't about setting a precedence.
Well, I understand the process very well. I served on the BZA many years. So
Yeah.
I understand the process. What I'm, what I'm saying is, what I'm saying is that these, that the chickens is in the zoning ordinance for a reason, and I, and I want to stick by the zoning ordinance. So I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. President, motion to approve BZA case 23-10-20.
Second.
With findings of fact by the BZA.
We have a motion and a second, Mr., a roll call, Mr. Troxel.
Busy night for roll calls. Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Conley?
Yes.
Mrs. Arvinitis?
No.
Mr. Getzlaff?
No.
Mr. Schmidt?
No. Motion's denied three to two. Thank you. Item D is consider acceptance of the cell.
You can't move on. You have to, you have to have a motion to deny it, Tom. We made a motion to approve it.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. You're right. The motion was to approve, and that motion was, was denied three to two. Now we need a new motion. You're right.
Motion to deny.
With the findings?
With the findings, yes. In step with the findings of fact.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a second. Um, roll call.
Motion to deny, in step with the unfavorable recommendation to the town council from the BZA, including the findings of fact.
Or to accept the unfavorable recommendation.
Yes.
Which means denial.
Which means, okay, to accept the unfavorable recommendation, which means deny.
We have a most, we have a motion to, on the floor for the, to follow the unfavorable recommendation to the town council. We have a motion.
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry. We had a second. Mr. Troxel, roll call.
Mr. Johnson?
No.
Mr. Conley?
No.
Mrs. Arvinitis?
Yes.
Mr. Getzlaff?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes. Motion carries three-two. Thank you. Item D is consider acceptance of cell tower lease agreement for the 91st Avenue water tower between the town of Shererville and the T-Mobile Central LLC Delaware Limited Liability Company. This is from the Waterworks Board Agenda. Any other further comments, Mr. Gorman?
No, sir.
Yep.
Pleasure of the board.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any further comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five-zero. Item E is consider acceptance agreement with the town of Shererville, Lake County, Indiana, and the St. John Township, Lake County, Indiana, for the operation of a gas card assistant benefit program and all matters related thereto.
Thank you, Mr. President. This agreement comes to you tonight between the town of Shererville and the St. John Township trustee's office. St. John trustee Kathy LaRue is here tonight to explain the program. Thank you, Kathy.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Welcome, Kathy.
Hi, Kathy. Hi. Okay, so my understanding is there, just a little history, a few years back, there was a group, a ministerial group that took donations and they funded or they gave police departments in our township gift cards so that if they came across someone who was stranded or needed gas, they could, they had those gift cards to provide to these people to help them, you know, get wherever they were going. And then this group disbanded, I want to say at the end of 2019. And since then, occasionally I would get phone calls from the police departments or police officers saying that they came across somebody that needed gas and would I be able to provide, my office provide gas, gas gift card for them to give to these people. Anyway, so I would, and which is, has never been a problem. But when I was at our township conference in September, I found out that I could actually enter into community service agreements with the towns in our township, and I can just go ahead and provide these gas cards to the police departments without, and then they would have them there and they don't have to call every time they needed one. Or I also heard that sometimes officers would pay out of their own pockets. So when I found out that I could enter this community service agreement, I am doing that, going to each of the towns to enter in an agreement. And then once it's approved, I'm going to give gift cards to the police departments. And it's based on the size of the department. So Shererville would get 51 gift cards. In the event they use all of those, they can just contact me again. And if I have the funds there, then I would be able to give them, we would enter another agreement. But it is, I think that they, I know I spoke with Chief Sormoz and what they did before with gift cards and the internal controls they had in place are very well done. So I'm fine with that. And I think this is just a, a good, good way for us to work together again.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kathy.
Couple, couple quick questions.
Sure.
What, what is the documentation on it? I mean, so, so when one is used and given to someone, how is it documented?
I can answer that, Tom. These cards will be kept in, in the police department itself. The cars will not have the gift cards. So if they come across it, the sergeant in charge of that shift will then, you know, distribute that card to the officer and the officer or deliver it to the officer where that car is stranded. And that's where, how the transaction will take place. So there'll be internal controls within the police department. If, is that correct, Mr. McNamara, deputy chief?
Yes. Back in 2010, I worked with the church group Crossroads was the lead church on it. And we have a reports generated and then the cards issued out to that person, but it is documented in the police report who received it and where the card went. The cards, we usually number the cards so we know exactly where the cards are. And there's a sign-out sheet for each card.
Okay. Yeah, that's where, that's what, that's what I was getting at, if, to see if that was going to be on part of the police report and such.
Yeah, we will not give them out without a police report. We will add a police report. That's how it's always been since 2010.
And that'd be a great way to document everything, yes.
Correct. And I'm really, I'm really strong in wanting internal controls with anything. So I think what, the way they are handling it or will handle it is very good. So I'm, I'm satisfied with that.
And how much is each of the gift cards, money-wise?
The gift cards are going to be $25 each. Yes. Yes.
Very good.
Yep. And for, and like I said, the department would receive 51 gift cards.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
It's a, it's a great program, guys. We've, we've been using it for years. Like I said, we're just running out now because the churches did stop, you know, their program itself. But it helps out a lot, you know, a couple times a year, for sure. I give it out myself.
Awesome.
Very good.
Thank you.
Any further comments?
No.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five-zero.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
Item F is consider acceptance of donations for $8,620. Mr. Troxel, would you be nice enough to read those donations?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President. As Mr. President said, we received in the month of October, $8,620. And of that, the donation fund for the K-9, we received for the Shererville Police Department K-9 fundraiser t-shirt and sweatshirt sales, $720. And Patricia Thomas Kerga donated $1,400 for a total K-9 donations of $2,120. On the donation fund for the fire department, American Online Giving Foundation for chainsaws received $6,500. Both of those total $8,620.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on donations. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five-zero. Next item is business from the floor. Is any other business from the floor? Any other business from the floor? No further business. This meeting is adjourned. Have a good night.